No.
Yeah.
Was he in a lot of pain then?
No.
All right, we're up and running. Okay, so okay, I don't see a doubt.
Oh, yes.
All right. We're gonna open the skateboard meeting since July twenty first.
Twenty first.
Sixteen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to sign the warrants?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Danny's not coming today?
They're not heard.
It depends on the tides, he might have to be working.
I don't know.
Seen a little tide right now.
He told me that. Is it?
Yeah, just got over.
Well, then he's, he can, he probably will be on there.
Oh Sheldon, you're our C B de Mill tonight. That's before your time.
Just.
You walked in the door.
Spin of the hat.
Uh, no, you're Scorsese, right?
So I need a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved, yes.
All in favor? We have a certificate here for Ethan Moore. Recognition of his exceptional service and outstanding sacrifice to his country, state, and community, and I'm going to go to, been asked by Bobby Eaton to, to speak at the memorial for him at the Legion, of course Eddie, Renee, we're all welcome.
We know that is that correct?
Saturday at one. So I need a motion that we can sign this?
How many motions we sign it?
Second.
All in favor? So if we can try to get Dan to sign it between now and then.
He certainly was a good guy. I, I knew him since.
Did you know Ethan?
I knew him since he was a baby.
I just knew his mother. I didn't know him.
I know him very well, he was a good young man.
It's, it's really sad, I've been trying to find a promo or something like this. I think I found one.
Thank you Carol for going.
In between the eleven and the two o'clock tour. Headed over there for one o'clock. Not a problem. All good. It's important.
Is it supposed to be a sunny day that day?
I don't think that we're gonna see the sun for a week that way.
It doesn't feel like it, does it?
I'd like to give it back to Renee. And then she can try, huh? I'm sure Dan will do it. Sign appointment papers for Deputy Sheldon's work.
I'll make a motion to sign it.
Would, has Amanda lined?
Amanda lined.
Mm. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Washington County Commissioners have a caucus. Annual caucus to elect members to the fiscal year 2022 Washington County Budget Advisory Committee. On behalf of the Washington County Commissioners and in accordance with M R S A Title thirty A nine hundred B, I hereby notify all municipal officers of Washington County to caucus by county commissioner districts for the purpose of electing municipal officer to their designees to serve as members of the 2020, 2022 Washington County Budget Advisory Committee. Is that what you were on for the past few years? Did you want to do that again?
Yeah, I was already sworn in last time. It's not my, I'm not.
Oh, it's actually, you're not up. So you, we're already being represented. Cool. Thank you very much, 'cause I know what, you've learned a lot from that, so that's, that's good. Award in half take prepare bid? Do we have that?
There's a letter that.
There's just one bid?
We, we have two bids.
There were two, yeah.
And they sent a letter, and I read that.
Oh, so there's two bids?
There's two bids, yeah.
One for six hundred and forty, one thousand, one for six ninety, six two fifty. So it's, who, uh, Mandy?
Man, Oliver is suggesting we go with the lowest bid, which is Donovan Construction.
And they're, they're also local.
Yeah.
They're local.
Yeah. Six hundred and forty one thousand.
So she thinks we should go over there now and not get questioned.
I'll make a motion, we accept Donovan Construction's bid for six hundred.
Yeah, and I'll second that. All in favor?
Who would prefer?
I favor Donovan.
Yeah, six, both favor.
What was bid?
Six hundred and forty one.
Six forty, six forty one.
Six forty one?
Yeah. Do we have to sign something?
Uh, motion, or, or is this?
I, the motion was?
To have me sign it. It, it got me on there, so you can just.
Of course, we'll have Renee sign our.
Second, all in favor?
Dan, second. Carol.
Okay, sign tax required property board. Just that's one for.
That's the one down in Brown Hill, I believe.
Yes, that's the one that Georgie Kendall purchased, the thirty three thousand, three thirty three. The payment's been made as well.
So I'll make a motion that we sign this municipal complaint D without covenants. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, second.
I got three seconds, I feel tired.
Second, third, and a fourth.
All in favor? I guess I must be, we're gonna go, yes, right? Okay, this is one of those documents you're supposed to sign even with your middle initials. It makes it valid. You have to sign it the way they got it. Going this way. You just come off the tide, huh?
Yeah, so I apologize for any.
We got Shellfish Warden telling us that you were gonna be busy.
I may not smell like foie mignon, but.
But it's the money.
Kind of a smoked addict.
Okay, so I'll, I'll address this. Transferring ownership of skip to the Shellfish Warden. It is, it is, um, it is in our best interests as a town to allow the Shellfish or, uh, Warden to own the skip, because he will have to maintain it and he will be responsible for it. But he will be covered when he's, uh, on our, on our, um, liability, workless comp, if you're actually doing Shellfish work.
If I may, I believe.
But if you're taking somebody in the boat doing something else.
I think Amanda expressed.
No, and I'm just saying.
That's all that boat's gonna be for is to do patrolling.
But you just wanna make sure that you keep it up and keep, keep it running, and if you need something, 'cause I think ultimately it's not gonna be as much as we thought, so if you have to have a little repair, just keep it in shape.
That's what Amanda talked about.
You don't wanna lose you, you know?
That, so we need a motion to do that.
I hope that we, uh, purchase the skip for the.
And land it. And have Sheldon own it.
I will second that.
Give them trailer.
Give them trailer.
And trailer.
And hopefully an engine at some point, right?
We're working on it.
Yeah, I know.
Right now it's paddles, right?
No, he's not.
Where'd you find the sketch, Sheldon?
Amanda found it. So that's a, we seconded.
She's doing, looking for the boat and everything.
Oh, I thought I made it, but I was like a.
I got Rachel making it.
Okay, second it.
All in favor?
Now, there's a document right there that will, last meeting you voted to take up to fifteen hundred out of the Shellfish Deflation Fund. This, we, Amanda purchased the boat and trailer for a hundred.
And we, we were in the setup.
And we reimbursed her two hundred and fifty plus the hundred for the repairs.
And I suggested five hundred.
And now this will take the remaining out, up to that amount if they buy a motor, um, on the fly, 'cause sometimes somebody doesn't wanna wait for two weeks for the money, so we should get the money out.
So it's like you wanna put more than a thousand dollars in.
This will take up two, I mean, you know, they have, until, when they find one, it's right there in the, I think it's eleven hundred and fifteen.
Because we did it in fifteen and they've always spent.
Where?
Right there, that first one right there.
This one here?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 oh.
Uh, Suzette drafted that.
And sometimes you need to go with cash, so someone will go, go with, they, you can't negotiate, and they're gonna go, well, come back two weeks later for a warrant, trying to buy a, yeah.
This will give Suzette permission to do a withdrawal when it's time.
And someone will also go with their with cash.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion.
So if I find a, a warrant, I can ask for the withdrawal.
You can just come to Suzette, and this, they're giving her permission to go withdraw it.
Okay.
And not have to wait for the warrant.
Yes.
Okay.
And then some don't.
Yeah.
Go and with.
You're okay.
Sheldon will.
Somebody in the town office will go with you.
Okay.
Just so you have a witness, you bought it, and then, and that, and that, uh, you get to receive and all of that.
And you have our blessings.
And blessings, yes.
I do.
Okay, first, second, where are we? We lost track.
First, second, we all voted yes while you were talking.
Okay. I couldn't have voted anything, we weren't.
Oh, maybe you were waiting to fly, but I thought you were.
Possible. So I'll, we're in favor of that. So that's exciting, Sheldon. People will have to scurry around if you can get to those beaches they didn't think you could get at before.
Yep.
C D B G Waste Water Treatment Upgrade Grant Update, I think you were, uh, came this week and Renee was able to sign it, 'cause we already agreed, agreed to it.
Yeah, I just updated you that I signed it, so.
Point custom comprehensive plan committee.
All right, so that's the big packet, if you want, just read the names off from each page, and that's, um.
So who are we?
It's basically the planning board plus Peter Boyce and Rachel. And, uh, the code enforcement officer.
Are you talking about comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Peter Boyce, Rachel, and Peter Boyce is able to do it?
He wants to, according to my sources. He didn't tell me directly, but somebody else told me he does.
That was signed here too.
Okay.
He told me too.
So how many are on the board? Seven with an alternate? Seven with two. Okay, well, I'll read. Patricia Van Rollins, Rhonda Welkum, Sharon Yates, Deborah Holmes, Cecil Moore, Gary Rhodes, Rachel Woodyore, Wanda Matthews, I have the same one, I have the same one. Peter Boyce. Seven of nine, which means seven with two alternates. Well, it, we just have to three and a half hour planning board.
Well, the planning board itself has an alternate, which is Rhonda, uh, Wanda right now, and the other one is.
We can't have eight on a board. It has to be an odd number. There's no such thing as having a quorum on a board with an even number. So it would have to be a board of seven with two alternates, because you, you're, if you go to a board of nine, you need five people all the time, it's hard. It needs to be a board of seven, somebody has to be.
Well, Wanda's the alternate for the planning board.
Well, Wanda and Peter maybe, because.
So Sheldon would be the alternate for the planning.
I mean, that's what I naturally would think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Peter is just so knowledgeable, you know?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
He can bring that to the table.
Patricia Van Rollins.
He's a very smart.
Somebody needs to be, what about Rhonda Welkum, does she wanna be the alternate?
She could.
Somebody needs to be the alternate.
Why don't, why don't we just, Rhonda.
Rhonda and Wanda.
Rhonda and Wanda.
Well, that's easy.
Do you need Peter in something like this?
You do.
I heard they were best of friends, all in.
Rhonda, Wanda?
Gary Rhodes, oh, wait a second, Gary Rhodes can't sit at, actually, out on the committee, he's, he's the CEO. It's like the Harvard Master, the Harvard Master isn't part of the Harvard Board that they have to attend. Maybe that's.
But this isn't, this is a whole different committee. You'd be acting as.
I thought it, I thought it was, okay, well, we can review this. I thought we just read in planning board ordinance that they do the comprehensive plan. Says right in our ordinance. So how could it be a separate committee?
Because the la, well, I'm scoring by the last committee, it was signed by the, I mean, the last comprehensive plan has the comprehensive committee spelled out on opening page.
It's a different committee.
They made a committee separate of that.
Okay, but the problem is, we don't have an ordinance that says that, that we have to abide by our ordinance, and our ordinance says the planning board does do the comprehensive plan, it says right in our ordinance, so.
So we don't have.
I don't care what they did in the past, but we need to follow the rules.
Something was telling me that there's something in our charter that says that, uh, it falls back onto the select board at some point.
I'll pick the charter, but.
It's the ordinance, it's the, it's the planning board ordinance, so unless they wanna change their ordinance and say that they are not doing the comprehensive plan, then they are doing.
It says unless otherwise designated by the select board. It does say that the planning board does it, yeah. We can revisit it, if you wanna go along.
No, I'm.
To the next item.
It's an important comprehensive plan, because that has changed exponentially since the last one.
So was everybody here already on the planning board, and there's just a few extra people?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's actually a couple.
So.
I brought in, you didn't know that last time.
Don't we have a new spot on the planning board we need to fill, and who, who will be?
That's coming up next, I don't have anybody. The one that I thought.
So it should be some, so I'm gonna read the names again, you tell me if they're officially on the planning board.
Here, this is section four, number, section four one. That's a planning board ordinance.
Nobody read it. The board shall prepare or supervise the preparation of a comprehensive plan as defined as M R S A thirty, section forty nine sixty C, unless directed otherwise by the Lubec Select, Lubec Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So who, who is on the planning board that's in here? Patricia Van Rollins? Rhonda?
Yes.
And they're all full-fledged members?
Wanda Matthews is the alternate. There's supposed to be two, but the other one's vacant.
Deborah Holmes. So my question to you, Cecil Moore, Gary Rhodes, how can Rachel sit on the planning board? No select board can sit, she can't sit on it.
This is, this is just a comprehensive plan.
So they're not, they're gonna be totally separate, they're gonna have totally separate meetings, they're not gonna have anything to do with the planning board. Well, you might want to check them out, because I don't know, I know that we're not allowed to sit on the planning board.
Yeah, I know.
And if the planning board.
And I couldn't still sit on the planning board when I became a selectman.
Yeah, so I don't know how you could be sitting on this.
Well, 'cause I think it's not like the planning board, it's like a committee.
It is even, it's major planning. Comprehensive plan is like the planning.
Yeah.
It's, so I don't, I would like.
Well, let's table it in the next meeting.
All right, MMA. It's plenty of time. I just recognize that the competent, the.
The select member, board members sit on the planning, uh, on a, some committee of the planning board, which is what it says. So make a motion that we favor D.
I agree with you.
Second, all in favor? Main Municipal Association Voting Ballot. Please don't go on mic, what are we supposed to do here? Election of MMA Vice President of the Second Committee.
You could, yeah, there's only one, there's a person for each position, so you can either vote or designate needed vote.
What would it sign? Vote for three, there's, there's nothing, nobody's running unopposed, are they?
That's right. And I don't know who any of them are.
So I'll make a motion, we sign the Main Municipal Association Voting Ballot.
I'll second.
All in favor? Well, we have an election coming up, and we only have one, one thing being, one position being three for. Three people running for two, school board, right, John? There's only one position that's being run, that's being, yeah, three, three.
Careful, I'm gonna quote you, Mr. Spock.
Jason and I are running unopposed.
Yeah, the choice is you either sign by municipal officer, or you sign by, or they all of them sign, but it has to be a municipal officer. Are you, the municipal official?
Yes.
But.
You would have to.
I can't even think.
Yeah.
Well, I was at, we're all working.
Yeah.
There. I'm, I'm not sure, but I know I am, and Dan is, and Jason is. What, are you been doing it for ten, making you tired?
Talking to my doctor.
What?
My doctor.
Your doctor?
Yeah.
And confusing me inaudible, yes.
Oh, yes. Valid election clerk. Did we get somebody?
Yeah, right there, there, I got twenty two options.
Penny. So we will make, I will make a motion to appoint Penny Sprague, Pierre Richter, and Brenda Foley, and, and Catherine Burns, anybody else? Four, right?
Mm-hmm, four.
To, uh, for election ballot for.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Give me. Oh, Dan, we should have him sign.
You're sipping through this tonight. It's not over yet. Okay, here we go. Renee had been telling me they were having some issues with the, um, postal, the mail being delivered. Once, the first one was for the credit card, and then they got lip things, he just didn't show up, and then there was a, a check that was arrived, and we're sorry, this was open, and the check was ripped, and a few other things, so I said, why don't we construct a letter to the, uh, Postal Service at headquarters.
Mister Joy.
To the U.S. Postal Service hand in May. Recently, the town of Lubec has been experiencing some delivery issues with both outgoing and incoming mail delivery. On May twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, we mailed a payment, payment to a vendor. The mail did not get received until July first of twenty twenty one, which is over a month, which incurred late fees and interest charges. On June ninth, twenty twenty one, another payment was mailed to a vendor located in Washington County, and as of July fifteenth, over a month, by the way, twenty twenty one, that payment had not yet been received. On June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, a payment was mailed to vendor in Lubec, Maine, and that payment has not yet been received. Last week, we received a payment from a property owner, the original envelope had been torn in half, as was the payment inside, which was a check. It was delivered in a U.S. Postal Service envelope, saying they were sorry for the condition of the delivery. As a municipality, taxpayers and the public in general expect a certain level of professionalism and timeliness. This recent lack of service of the United States Postal Service is appalling and needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
This has been going on for.
Sincerely, the Town of Lubec Select Board. Do you love that?
Yeah, this has been going on for about a year.
We're not a third world country, yeah.
Oh, well, well, my wife will let people call, say, hey, sent you a check three months ago, how come you haven't?
No, they didn't get my vote anyway. So I think this is long overdue. It has no reflection on our local post office, I know they do, or anybody locally, it's just, it's the system.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Well, a while ago, it was insisted, and I think it was when Sonia, just at the end of her term, that they insisted, the United States Post Office, that if we were to mail something to Lubec, it has to go to Machias first.
No, it goes way down.
And now it goes to Hander.
No, it goes to Hander, and then, and then, it went way down to the sorting facility.
So that would explain, perhaps, it not getting there.
That's efficiency.
Yeah.
You're not, but, um.
Well, we, we have somebody nodding.
Who, who would that, who would that be? Retired from the postal service in that process. Sorry, no, no. Nope, nothing directed at you, but, yeah.
And I talked to Jill at the back.
Do we have any other business?
We do. Somebody has had a break on the Shellfish Committee for a year, and I have, and I have offered to sit back on the Shellfish Committee, and they have a meeting on the second. Would anybody like to appoint me on the Shellfish Committee?
I would appoint you. I would like to appoint you to sit on the Shellfish Committee.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? I can't vote. Thank you very much, I really do.
The paper's above the other one, you already signed it.
Oh, that's one, yeah. Planning Board Resignation.
Mike Scovani did, uh, send me a mailing, an email that he'd, he'd like to resign from the planning board. I don't have anybody in mind.
So there's a spot on it?
Yes, yep.
So, uh, those people that were on, so still a board of seven with two alternates. So what are the alternates? Can move up?
Yes, right.
And then they get appointed alternates, whatnot, but that's up to Cecil, he's the chair.
Right.
And he, I mean, with any committee, usually the chair will pick out, pick the people that's best for the committee, and then come to the select board, and we're not.
A lot of it wouldn't.
I'm grateful to anybody who's watching tonight, if there's anybody out there watching, we, this is the time of the year where we reappoint people to, of myriad of committees, and if you are interested in getting involved with the town, helping out, come to the town office and put your name in for any one of the committees we have. We have Harbor Boards, Safe Harbor, Recycling, we have.
Shellfish.
Shellfish, what else can we, Planning Board.
Hopefully this.
Economic Development. Economic Development, so.
I would like to thank Mike for a fantastic job in his years of service. He's not.
He's, he has been volunteering for the town board.
Many, many committees.
Yes.
And he, he actually had building experience, so that adds to the planning board as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yes.
Do you wanna?
As do you, Mr. Lacyes.
To accept his resignation? Yes, 'cause he's still on Safe Harbor.
And he's on our line.
So he's still on two committees.
Yeah.
So, so, um, somebody wanna make a motion to accept his resignation?
I would reluctantly accept his resignation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I say no.
Mike, I haven't gotten out of the.
Just to throw in a no to mix it up with Michael.
Um, just, just before you all go, there is, if you could hand that to Carol again, please, that's the co, the Comprehensive Plan Committee from twenty ten, and Will Corey was the board representative on that one, so, just showing.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean. Well, it sounds fine then. Are they gonna meet in the next two weeks?
I don't, it, this is gonna be a, a go, ongoing process for probably the next couple of years, and it's gonna be over.
So do you wanna, do you want to revisit this before we leave? Is this early?
I don't know, I, like I said, I just observed that, at this time, there was a Lubec Comprehensive Plan update.
So why don't we, why don't we appoint everybody and just make sure select or, I'm just because it happened, didn't.
And we included all the planning board, so they're, they'll fulfill their duty.
So, so I think we're good. So, so I think we're good, and you just, well, it's conditional for Rachel to make sure any select can sit on it, but we could just do it that way. Want to just go ahead with, wanna go ahead with putting this people on tonight? I mean, the sooner the better, they start working, Rachel.
I was thinking September, when the tourists go.
They're not gonna go September, I mean, slammed for October, if you don't, all coming in October. October, 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 I'm like, no, no, no. Pressuremen are there, there's no more sightseeing in October. Okay, so we'll revisit this, making a motion for, I'll hear everybody's names again, Patricia Van Rollins, Rhonda Welkum.
She's an attorney, she was.
Sharon Yates, Deborah Holmes, Cecil Moore, Gary Rhodes, uh, Rachel Wubiar, Peter Boyce, and Wanda Matthews, and also, you made sure that the CEO could sit on that.
He did before.
Oh.
Contingency of approval, I give my second.
All in favor?
We definitely need Gary on that.
Um, well, yes, we do.
You know, the thing is that the last comprehensive plan was, uh, they were helped a great deal by the Washington County Council.
That's right.
And that's.
It's already been done, all you're doing is speaking it.
Well, it's been, the, the hard work's already been done.
I was contacted by the Hancock County Planning Commission, and they offered to do the transportation chapter free of charge, and then I asked, what about the whole rest of it, would they help us? Because they know we don't have the comprehensive right now, and we need to have guidance on everything. It's gonna be a big deal.
I see it that way.
I have no committee F D.
You created a comprehensive plan, do it from nothing.
No, they had one from nineteen ninety-three. It was a while, I think it was twenty-two years, so.
When was this one done?
This one's twenty-ten, and they're good for twen, ten years.
The thing is, Carol, I, it's, a lot of our demographics have changed.
So you're gonna put in a commercial district?
I would recommend something like that.
Are you wanting to do anything? No, Rachel.
But we have the addition of the Butler property, which gets a different look to our town.
I have no committee F D.
Anything for Marion transfer?
Status quo. It's the busiest year they've ever had, that's what I can tell you. Their tonnage is way up, heavy business here.
I was in, uh, much with someone in, uh, who was an ex-town manager, E-Sport, what, what's his name, John Southern? And he told me, and I, he'll quote me on the figure, that E-Sport spent like two hundred and something thousand in Marion transfer.